Good evening, everyone. Members of the city council, department heads, members of the public. I'd like to call to order our caucus for the regular city council meeting Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. This is the opportunity that the council has to discuss and debate various items on the agenda as a body with the department heads here to answer any questions. Items up to number four of the current agenda are administrative and we'll dispense with those. Moving to item number five, communication from our city clerk, request city council approve attached resolution changing the regular meeting date from September 19th to September 20th. Any comments from the council members? Okay, moving on to item number six, our city assessor, request city council approve sale of city-owned property at 126 Delawana Avenue to Ali Sala, 14 Pearl Street, offer of $4,000 assessed valuation, $6,200, I believe her recommendation was for the approval of the sale. Anyone have any comments on item number six?
Yes. My only question was about the size of the property, 58, 172, I want to, aren't town, I don't know. It's a buildable size lot, is it?
Right. I think our requirement is 50-foot frontage, right, Rick? I don't know what they are for that area, but it looks like a buildable lot to me. And I also can't tell by the paperwork here whether or not, how we acquired this property. So I would like to take the time to look into that a little bit. Do you wish to consider tabling that?
Sure.
Anyone else on that item, number six? Okay, moving on to item number seven, government city assessor, request city council approve sale of city-owned property at 499 Ridge Road 2501 Ridge Road LLC, 501 Ridge Road, submitted purchase price of $1,000, property assessed at $3,800. Any members of the council have any comments on item number seven? Recommendation from the city assessor, does that sound so? Anyone?
What is the measurement for this?
I don't have that in front of me because what's forwarded to us, I believe it's just a fraction of a parcel. Thank you. Anyone have any comments on there? I would consider the recommendation that city assess for item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, from Commissioner Department of Public Works, Mr. DeSantis, request city council approve purchase of 2023 F-150 XL Supercap 4x4 for the purchase price of $39,502.17 as per the state contract. Mr. DeSantis, anything you want to say to shed some light on that item?
This one and the next item, the Bobcat, the money for this has all been encumbered from last year's budget, and we needed $18,407 from this year's budget, which comes out of my equipment budget. So I'm not asking for any money from the council for this. This is all budgeted. These are two budgets of others.
Item number nine also, all right?
Correct.
All right, as far as item number nine, again, from Mr. DeSantis, request city approve purchase of Bobcat Skid steer loader for $44,407.78, which includes the trade-in value of the old machine, quote, were attached. And again, just as indicated by Mr. DeSantis, the amounts had been budgeted for already. Anyone, members of the city council have anything, any questions on items number eight or nine? Moving on to item number 10, from our city controller, request city council approve attached ordinance regarding police captain Joseph Leo, retired effective August 20th, 2022, transfer of funds from the employee benefits reserve to police department personnel services budget code. Anyone have any questions regarding item number 10? Lynn, anything you want to add on that? Of course, we, council extend our thanks to Captain Leo for his many years' service, exemplary service in many instances, and wish him Godspeed and health and happiness in his retirement. Unless there's anything else, we'll move on to item number 11, again, from the city controller, request city council approve attached resolution devising city's current mileage reimbursement rate. And I believe that's what, up to 55 cents per mile?
Right now, I think it's 62 and a half cents.
Yeah, so it'll go up another seven cents. And the way the resolution's written is as the IRS changes their guidance or guidelines, our reimbursement rate would change automatically with whatever the IRS passes. Thank you. Anyone have any, any members of the council have any comments on item number 11 regarding IRS mileage for travel? Okay, item number 12, government city controller, based on recommendation, director of public safety, request city council approve attached ordinance transferring funds to the police department services, police ATV patrol. It's a, regarding a sum of $44,917 for a trailer, covered trailer, and I believe eventually two ATVs. Director Wolf, anything you want to add on that for our consideration?
No, just that the money's already in the budget, so we're not asking for anything, just asking to transfer it over. And like the council president mentioned, this year, we're going to buy one ATV and a trailer, a double trailer to carry two, because eventually we let the budget for a second come this year.
And the city has, today, has no ATVs, correct?
Nothing. In fact, there was an accident several weeks ago, but we had to actually call in an outside agency to come and assist with the, to bring in an injured person.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have any questions or any issues with item number 12?
Yeah. It's something that I've been kind of pushing for for the last couple of years, and we have a lot of wooded areas in our city, city property, and we need access to get back in these areas, and we want to be driving our police cars there, third left. So I think our public safety and our police department through, I mean, supporting us as much as ever, and thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman.
I also have a question. Will this be something that will be used to patrol or strictly for emergency purposes?
Well, we don't really want to give too much away, but we're going to try to eliminate some of the issues that everyone's come up with over the last few years.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. And in our audience, who else? I have our police chief, Becker. Anything you wish to address on that item, yourself, chief?
Director covered it all.
Okay, thank you. We got item number 13, communication director, public safety, Wolf, request city council approve attached orders provided by the city controller and approve the attached contract between city and SIA Communications regarding new citywide radio system for fire, police, and DPW. Director Wolf, would you give the public a little bit of background on there?
Yes. So with the new system that we're requesting, it's going to connect police, fire, and DPW all as one. They can all communicate. Now, the only way you can communicate with one another is through cell phone. A few other things, the current radio system we have for the police department is extremely outdated. If, it's already been told if our system goes down now, it will cost $75,000 just to replace the main, I guess motherboard, or whatever you want to call it, that's going to make this continuous. They can't fix it anymore. They have to replace it brand new. On top of that, this is going to be coming off of the radio towers, I believe, on...
They'll put up microwave antennas, it'll go on our roof here, and then down the tunnel for the fire. It'll be direct connect to Seneca One Tower. That's where it is. So it's a direct line of sight for these microwave antennas.
But they've had, they've had the system go down before, and they can't communicate. Just in the month that they, that SIA gave the police department to just check things out, they actually had an issue with their tower. We never lost communication at all. It continued to go up. It continued to work fine. So it's, it's just phenomenal. I think Tony could, you know, Tony's got some more information if you want. I don't know if I covered it.
You covered it pretty much. It's a total upgrade in the system for us, you know. We have a repeater now that's in this building. We lost power to the building, which we did a couple of years ago. Police had no communications with their patrol. So this, if, like you said, it's a microwave, it doesn't matter if the power goes out, they're still going to be able to communicate disasters and storms, and we can all communicate together.
And what I'm, what we're asking for is, we are asking for the money upfront if the council agrees, and then I believe ARPA funds will become available early next year, and we can replace anything that we use now. If we do it over a three-year period, it's going to cost more. There's also a lease option that I have here. I didn't bring this up to anyone. The lease option is for five years, and it's going to cost upwards of three-quarters of a million dollars to lease it. It's far better and just makes more sense to buy this now, and then all we're going to have to do is pay maintenance.
And it's my understanding, Director Wolf, that you and various department heads, Tony and Chief Becker and Chief Fino have been working on this for the last three or four months, and it was in the works, and that's why it wasn't made a budget item at the time of past the last budget, is that correct?
Right. And there was some money budgeted for the police department for the new radio, a new radio system. But it wasn't going to be a new one, it was just going to patch everything together. And then this came along, and it's, it really is kind of too good to be true. It really is a great, great system.
Well, it's almost necessary. It's safety and lives on the line.
Absolutely.
Can you just tell us a little bit more about how the utilization of the three departments with the GPS, with laptops, with the services that are provided, along with the IT component, which I understand is a local company, so they're readily available in the need of service?
Yep.
Okay, and that's all covered with our subscription? Is it a monthly subscription?
Well, if there's, if there's a problem, you know, they have to pay a monthly fee. Will there be, if something does happen, will it cost something down the road? It could cost a little bit to repair something or replace.
And that monthly fee is locked in, it doesn't change?
The monthly fee, from what I was told, has not changed in how many years? Seven, seven years?
Seven to 10 years. I spoke to Mike Sia, who owns the company, and I asked him that question, how, you know, we buy this, my airtime's going to cost me 1,300 a month to monitor everything. How often does that go up? He goes, it hasn't gone up in seven years. He's a local company, and he, you know, I'm sure he's looking, you know, to make a splash. They had this in the village, or the town of East Aurora, the chief out there, I spoke to him, he uses it, and it's great. He hasn't gone up, and I believe it's an extremely fair deal. Like I said, he, I was surprised at the low number that, because it shocked me. So, but yeah, that, it hasn't gone up. I'm sure there will be some increase in costs, but he hasn't gone up in seven years.
And with the usage that you guys were able to, I guess, do a tutorial or some kind of test run, is it user-friendly for everyone?
Oh, it's absolutely user-friendly. You can, you can do, you can have as many channels as you want. You know, I had, you know, I can get DPW channel, fire channel, main police channel, investigator's channel.
You can add as many as you want, it doesn't cost anything.
Some of the radios are operable, you can, you can talk to one person, you can text the person. So it's just a private conversation between you two that doesn't go out over the airwaves, because you don't need it out there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and also on these radios has an emergency button that if there's a, somebody's in an accident where they can't speak or try to get a hold of anybody, you just have to press this one button, and that sends a signal, sends their location, and it would happen. So if a police officer, a plow truck tips over and he's incapacitated, all they have to do is hit this button.
Sends the exact location where they are. GPS updated every 10 seconds with a timestamp and a location.
Anyone else have any other cities, towns that uses these sites?
East Aurora uses it. I'm not, I'm not aware of anyone else that uses it locally, because we've been working on what we need here. You know, Chief Fino started it because he was looking for it, and he brought it up to me, and I said, I'm in the market, because, you know, we're looking at it, if we have another failure, it's going to be catastrophic downstairs. So we all jumped in, and we asked, you know, Mr. DeSantis, if he'd be interested, because there's a lot of good, good things there for management and for safety.
Is there any potential to link in the school district like this?
School district, in fact, we could have a channel, because the Lackawanna City School District has SIA radios inside here.
Oh, so they're already equipped?
But we have officers in there, and so our off-duty guys, we like to have them take their radios, but with them being on SIA, I can ask for a channel. I want the Lackawanna School Channel, and he'll do that for us.
Anyone else have any questions? Councilman?
Yes. Sounds like a great idea. Some of that new equipment's probably under warranty, too, right? So if there's any repairs, that's a lot. But are we addressing how we're going to pay for that here?
Yeah, I believe it would be coming out of the general fund and then be reimbursed next spring through the...
ARPA, ARPA rescue fund, I believe it's called.
That's what we talked about. Well, I just wanted to bring it up so everybody knows.
Yeah, it won't cost, that's, the rescue fund, it's going to be covered by...
Take it out of the general fund, and then after February, when this is allowed, allowable expense, we get the plan.
Yep.
So then we'll be saving maybe $8, $10 interest if we spread it out.
Right.
Okay, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Lynn, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to add that there was a little bit left over in our fire protection equipment grant, so 32, a little over 32,000 of that grant is going to be used, so not all of it will be coming out of the general fund.
Okay. Yeah, and unless there's anything else for Director Wolf, that you can ask to be excused as a result of a personal matter, and to that extent, John, thank you very much for your input and all your help.
Thank you. And just as I leave, for Captain Joe Leo, it's up to the council, I'm not, that man deserves it. Did a great job for many years for the city of Lackawanna.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good night. Now, John, you know, we talk about you as soon as you walk in.
Oh, I can't wait. You need to get me a copy of the tape.
All right, anyone else on item number 13? If not, moving on to item number 14, from the director of recreation, Brian Laxo, request city council approve bid of $191,000, $24 from Gable Construction, refurbished, three basketball courts located at the Dell, the three investment park playgrounds, which may or may not be entertained by the council, approved on another, at a prior council date. Director Laxo, anything you want to add on that?
No, the bids, for some reason, I thought the, after speaking with councilman Serlik, we discussed the bids not being a part of this actual submission. We did this in conjunction with the purchasing office, and I would have liked to see them submitted, but one of us missed a step somewhere. They are on record as being around $65,000 at each location, which is consistent with our initial estimates, and we only did receive the one bid. So it's the amount of money we expected to spend, and I'd like to see it approved.
Thank you, Brian. Any members of the council have any questions for Director Laxo? For this year or this year?
As far as I know, it's ASAP. The three locations are ones that we selected due to the volume of traffic. We tracked it through our lunch program to see which playgrounds were most utilized in our city. We kind of tried to space them out throughout the city with the intention of also putting a court at Franklin Playground, but we are going to delay that for a bit until we get the footprint for the larger project at Franklin Playground with the splash pad. So this is, this is the first step in an ongoing process of renovating some of the playground courts with the eventual plan of getting to all of them in the city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, one more thing. Like I said, when we approved it originally, it's something I've been pushing for the last few years. It's, you go around, you look at some of the other basketball courts, and they're in a lot better shape than ours. Our, we have a spray weed killer on basketball courts. I appreciate all your work and play, Brian, and Director Armin. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to them.
Anyone else on item number 14? John, item number 15, from Phil Arnold, New York Veterans Day Parade, committee request city council approve utilization of the Philly Parkway Annual Veterans Day Parade, starting November 5th, 2022. Anyone have any issues or questions on item number 15? We got item number 16, communication from Calabadilla, executive director of access, requesting city council approve commissioner of deeds status for a number of the access of Western New York employees. It's been done in the past, also, ministerial thing, really. Anyone have any questions on item number 16?
What are the...
Commissioner of deeds is similar to a notary public, only you don't have to take an examination. Notary public can take a signature and acknowledge a signature anywhere, whereas a commissioner of deeds can only acknowledge a signature in the city or the municipality where they are approved. And you don't have to have any special training or take a special example. Rick, do you want to add anything else on that?
I think they're limited in where they can exercise their authority as well, maybe within the city.
All right, anyone else? Item number 17, base order regarding some issues, three issues which we'll take up during the regular meeting. And for the council's consideration, I will be making a motion after the regular portion of the meeting on number 17, possibly waive the rules to entertain and direct our DPW commissioner and Mr. DeSantis to proceed with ordering light poles for the corner of South Park or a drone, replace those that are in need of being replaced. The reason for the request initially is because of the delayed time in getting items because of the supply chain, and it may save two of the six to eight weeks, if I understand correctly, don't I?
Yes, exactly.
So just so the council knows, we'll make that motion, it'll be up to the council whether to entertain it or not. Unless there's anything else, we have approximately six minutes before the regular start of the meeting. We can take a six-minute recess. Okay, good evening, everyone. Members of the La Cuanas City Council, various department heads, the public and the public at home, welcome to the regular council meeting for La Cuanas City Council for Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. I would like to call this meeting to order, I would ask that everyone rise for the political allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, would you take the roll?
Will do, Mr. Council President, Councilman Flahie.
President.
Anderson.
Here.
Serlik.
Here.
Rano.
Here.
Department heads, law.
Here.
Development.
Here.
Public Works was excused at 6:47 during the caucus. Public Safety?
The way around, over.
I'm sorry. Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety, yeah, was excused 6:47 during caucus. Controller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Public Information?
Here.
Hearing from citizens, apparently we don't have anybody on the sheet to speak. We can move right into the approving of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15th, 2022.
Rano moves to adopt the minutes of August 15th, 2022, is it?
Flahie seconds.
Motion by Rano, second by Flahie, to adopt the minutes of August 15th, 2022. Meeting is written. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Three, five, zero, departmental reports one through four.
Rano moves to receive and file departmental reports one through four, including...
Flahie seconds.
Motion by Rano, second by Flahie, to receive and file departmental reports one through four. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero, communications from division department heads, number five, city clerk, request city council approve the attached resolution changing the date of the regular meeting of Monday, September 19th, 2022, to Tuesday, September 20th, 2022.
Flahie moves to receive and file an act on resolution.
Rano seconds.
Motion by Flahie, second by Rano, to receive and file act on resolution. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Just for the record, Councilman Anderson was going to vote no.
We will, we'll note change on the record.
Patriots.
He's a Patriots fan.
Oh, good God.
What do you have for reelection?
Wow, we got three years left.
Is impeachment on the table?
Consider it under waiver of the rules.
All right, so the resolution pursuant to chapter three, section 3.7 of the charter of the city of Lackawanna, changing the date of the regular meeting of the Lackawanna City Council from September 19th, 2022 to September 20th, 2022.
Flahie moves to approve request.
Rano seconds.
Flahie?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Three, five, zero. Number six, city assessor, request the city council approve the sale of the city-owned property at 126 Delawana Avenue to Ali Sala, 14 Pearl Street, for his submitted offer price of $4,000. The property is assessed by the city at $6,200.
Rano moves to table this request, pending additional information relative as to whether or not that lot is a buildable lot according to city co-brands regulations. Second, Serlik.
Motion by Rano, second by Serlik, to table the request pending additional information regarding the buildability of that lot. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Second, table, five, zero. Item number seven, city assessor, request the city council approve the sale of city-owned property at 499 Ridge Road to 501 Ridge Road LLC, 501 Ridge Road, for his submitted offer price of $1,000. The property is assessed by the city at $3,800.
Rano moves to approve request.
Anderson. Motion by Rano, second by Anderson, to approve request. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
No.
Rano?
Yes.
Three, four, one. Item number eight, DPW commissioner, request the city council approve the purchase of a 2023 F-150 XL Supercap 4x4 for the sum of $39,582.17 as per the state contract code and terms attached.
Rano moves to approve request.
Ready, set. Motion by Rano, second by Rano, to approve request. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Five, zero. Item number nine, DPW commissioner, request city council approve purchase of a Bobcat Skid steer loader in the sum of $44,407.78, which includes the trading of the old machine, open terms attached.
Rano moves to approve request.
Ready, set. Motion by Rano, second by Rano, to approve request. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number 10, city controller, request the city council approve the attached ordinance regarding police captain Joseph Leo, who retired effective August 20th, 2022. The ordinance transfers funds from the employee benefits reserve to the police department personnel services budget code.
Rano moves to receive and file act on ordinance. In addition, on behalf of the city council, we would like to thank Captain Leo for his many years of exemplary service to the citizens of Lackawanna and the Lackawanna Police Department. We should wish him Godspeed and health and happiness on his retirement.
Ready, set. Motion by Rano, second by Rano, to receive and file act on ordinance. Flahie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Serlik?
Yes.
Rano?
Yes.
The ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by transferring two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents in the budget code for employee benefits reserved in the budget code for Police Department Personal Services.
Rannau moves to adopt the ordinance.
Motion by Rannau, second by Anderson to adopt ordinance is written. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number eleven, city controller requests the City Council approve the attached resolution revising the city of Lackawanna's current mileage reimbursement rate.
Rannau moves to receive and file Act on Resolution. Second. Second. Surlick.
Motion by Rannau, second by Surlick to receive and file Act on Resolution. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The resolution establishing the city of Lackawanna's mileage reimbursement rate can match the mileage reimbursement rate established by the Internal Revenue Service at the effective time of travel.
Rannau moves to adopt resolution as written. Second.
Motion by Rannau, second by Surlick to adopt resolution as written. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number twelve, city controller, based on the recommendation of the Director of Public Safety, requests the City Council approve the attached ordinance transferring funds from Police Department Personal Services to Police ATV Patrol.
Rannau moves to receive and file Act of Ordinance.
Mufly second.
Motion by Rannau, second by Murray to receive and file Act of Ordinance. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by reducing the budget code for Police Department Personal Services other by forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and increasing the budget code for Police ATV Patrol by forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
I'd like to make that motion to adopt ordinance as written. Rannau seconds.
Motion by Surlick, second by Rannau to adopt ordinance as written. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number thirteen, Director of Public Safety requests the City Council approve the attached ordinance provided by the city controller and approve the attached contract between the city and SAIA Communications regarding a new citywide radio system for the police fire DPW.
Rannau moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance and associated contract. Murray second.
Motion by Rannau, second by Murray to receive and file Act on Ordinance and associated contract. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. The ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget ordinance adopted May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by reducing the budget code for Police Department Equipment by thirty thousand dollars, reducing the budget code for maintenance of streets equipment by twenty-one thousand dollars, reducing the budget code for Fire Department Emergency Equipment by two thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, increasing the budget code for transfer to other fund capital by fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and allocating fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars to the budget code for citywide radio system SAIA.
Rannau moves to adopt the ordinance as written.
Mufly seconds.
Motion by Rannau, second by Mufly to adopt ordinance as written. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Part two of that, the contract between the city and SAIA Communications for citywide radio system for police fire DPW.
Rannau moves to approve contract between the city and SAIA Communications.
Mufly seconds.
Motion by Rannau, second by Mufly to approve the contract between the city and SAIA Communications. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number fourteen, Director of Recreation requests the City Council approve the bid, which is one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and four dollars from Galvo Construction for the refurbishment of the three basketball courts located at the Delve Victory and Bethlehem Park Playground.
Motion to approve. Rannau second.
Motion by Surlick, second by Rannau to approve request. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Items, uh, excuse me, communications from citizens, number fifteen. Phil Arnold, Western New York Veterans Day Parade Committee requests the City Council approve the utilization of McKinley Parkway for their annual Veterans Day Parade to be held Saturday, November fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Mufly hopes to approve the request referred to Director of Public Safety.
Murray second.
I have a motion by Mufly, second by Murray to approve request, refer the Director of Public Safety. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Ready?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number sixteen, to lead up to executive director of Access Western New York, requests the City Council approve Commissioner Deed's status for the following access of Western New York employees. There's, uh, seven employees listed. All their terms are going to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Mufly hopes to approve the request term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Rannau seconds.
Motion by Mufly, second by Rannau to approve request terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Mufly?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Surlick?
Yes.
Rannau?
Yes.
Three, five, zero. Item number seventeen, Faith Gordon, residence submits communication regarding the following. Police enforcement at four-way stop at Adrian and Alcart, status of one fifty-five Center Street and dogs in the city of Lackawanna.
Um, for the public's information, uh, in the future, while we've often afforded an opportunity for the public to communicate and ask questions and interact to the City Council, we ask that that be refrain or pertain particularly to, uh, agenda items as well as to councilmatic concerns, um, and items that are within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Uh, to that end, we will entertain Ms. Gordon's communication today. Some of these, I, I don't know what's expected and will refer to uh, various department heads, but these are things that obviously the City Council will have no jurisdiction over and certainly have no answers. And, uh, Ms. Gordon, you may want to address the first one. I'm reading from your letter. Lackawanna City Council, please include these items on your agenda for September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Number one, as of the submission, as of this submission, I have still not observed any parked cars, police cars. To observe the cars flying through the four-way stops at Adrian and Alcart. I, I, we have no ability to respond to that.
I'm aware, so I'm, I'm just going to submit this for every council meeting until we can see some action taken there.
Well, you can do that. We may not entertain that at every, at every council meeting for, for expediting, expediting the council, um, meeting itself. You can submit it, we can receive and file it. Submitting it every time, submitting it each time and expecting the council to do something when we have no jurisdiction to do or answer the questions doesn't seem to be very practical, in my opinion.
I, I was wondering if I could ask, has anybody done a study or gotten a, a cost estimation of what it would cost to have two speed bumps in those intersection? I know that they have them in the city of Buffalo and people are very happy with them on their street. And I wonder if anybody here, um, has priced it out?
No, I don't believe anyone's priced it out, but just so you know, the city of Buffalo uses the same engineering consultant firm that we use. And the representative was here a couple of meetings ago and indicated that the city of Buffalo went through an eighteen-month study for the deployment of those particular speed bumps in those particular locations, including a survey of each of the residents in those locations being affected by those speed bumps. Just so you know, the state of New York requires certain requirements for the installation of speed bumps and speed bumps don't, aren't the answer to everything. Uh, they do present their own hazards. It could subject the city to liability in the event that the speed bump itself was a contributing factor to an accident. In addition to that, speed bumps will also slow down a response time for emergency vehicles. But no, to my knowledge, no one has priced that out and it would require, or, or if it's done properly, there have been other requests for other, uh, considerations for speed bumps within portions of the city, um, that may be looked at sometime in the future. But right now, I don't see as, as that being a, a, a very viable um, answer at this particular point in time. So to answer your question, I don't believe anybody's priced them out.
Well, that's why I'm asking here, because everybody that matters and that has anything to do with anything in the city like this would be, is here to address the situation or have knowledge of it.
Well, we, we've heard from you and you're one person, we haven't heard from anyone else.
Oh, should I get a petition?
Uh, you can do whatever you think is appropriate.
I just want to know whatever it would take to give you whatever assistance you need to look into it.
Well, it, again, it hasn't been brought up and if you want to have a petition generated, it's up to you, it's up to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, your item number two of that letter is, uh, quote, is one five five Center's Center, a halfway house for sex offenders, question mark? This address repeatedly comes up on sex offender notifications. Um, we, I, I don't believe any of the members here have any knowledge of that. The Police Department would be the appropriate, uh, agency to consider looking into that. Uh, I don't think the city of Lackawanna designates any particular location as a halfway house for sex offenders. I believe the requirement is if you're designated a certain level of sex offender, you have the, uh, legal obligation to register with the Police Department every time you move in to what address you're moving to. That information, I believe, is downstairs. We have no access to that. You have indicated, according to your letter, that you did look online uh, and that address repeatedly comes up. But as far as the city, uh, uh, designating, designating one five five Center Street as a halfway house for sex offenders, I've never even heard of such of a...
I didn't think that the city had designated it.
I just... I don't think we can.
Noticed on all the notifications that we get that this address, um, consistently shows up.
Okay, what are you asking the council?
I'm just bringing it to anybody's attention that might need to be aware of it.
That's, I believe that's why the notifications come from the state.
Right.
Item number three is considering the number of dogs that are running around loose in the city of Lackawanna being walked off lead and also the number of dogs that are not licensed in the city of Lackawanna, does not seem feasible to have a part-time uh, animal control officer. Full-time is needed. Animal control officer needs to be able to verify that all dogs running at large are licensed and up to date on shots with the city before being returned to their owners. Fines should be increased. I don't know how to address that issue either. I mean, we have a, an animal control officer. I believe there's an exam that's being, uh, offered at this point in time. Physician is part-time. This matter had been discussed openly and budgeted at, at a prior uh, council meeting that the city of Lackawanna doesn't, doesn't have a need for a full-time animal control officer. And perhaps some of these questions should be addressed to the officer in question. Uh, we certainly don't have, as the City Council answers. Uh, I don't, and, and John Wolf, who is Director of Public Safety, isn't here. He was excused. Uh, I don't, I don't know how many complaints have been for dogs that you indicate are walking, being walked off lead or running wild. And I don't know who would have the information as far as dogs not being licensed other than what the filing requirements are in the city clerk's office and that is confidential information.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilman Surlick?
Just wanted to say that, I, I don't know, I'm around the city all day. I drive all over, I'm all over the place on the first ward. The guys see me, everybody sees me around. I don't see dogs running all over the city. When you see dogs running around the city?
And I see them posted on Facebook and I think that the issue is...
Facebook, but...
That, um...
I'm, I'm looking with my eyes and I don't see them.
You know, when the mayor rewrote the, the article for the animal control law, um, she put in there that people, they had to be licensed and provide their homeowners or renters insurance. And when people are just finding animals and just working within a little network to try and find their owners back, it does not give our animal control officer a chance to scan that dog and to verify that the dog is indeed registered with the city and is up to date on their shots and is providing the proper insurance, which is a revenue thing for the city also. It also, um, just, people have no respect and they don't care about the animal control law. Um, they just flaunt it. And I don't even have to leave my yard, Council President, to see these dogs that are not on lead, being walked off lead and, and know where they are and that they're not licensed. That's why I'm bringing it up here, but you made a point.
Have you, have you observed these?
Yes, sir.
These dogs individually?
Yeah.
Do you, do you, did you check them for licenses?
Yes.
How, how did you capture them?
Um, we know where they are.
Who's we?
The people in the neighborhood. We know where these dogs are and they're, they're running loose and they're being walked off lead. But I will definitely give Mr. Wolf a call tomorrow.
Yeah. Have you reported these?
Huh?
Have you reported them to the?
Yes.
Officer?
Yeah.